Thank you.
Can I ask a question also, or ask staff to, or ask the Director of Community Development to also kind of make a mention about any changes, I mean, because we've been operating for now a number of years under cannabis ordinance. When the new cannabis ordinance goes into effect, what effect will that have on existing projects?
Thank you.
Our current zoning code does have allowances for, or does have regulations for what's called a legal non-conforming use. Whenever zoning code changes and there are active use permits out there, they're considered legal non-conforming, so they can continue to operate using the regulations that were in place at their approval. They can't expand a legal non-conforming use. We have not had any of our use permits reach the end of their 10-year lifespan for cannabis use permits, but when it does happen, we will consider extending the use permit versus starting over with a brand-new use permit. And so that legal non-conforming use is likely to continue in the future for those that have already been approved. But anything new going forward, including applications that have not yet been approved, would need to conform to the new regulations.
Thank you.
And I know that we were still going through attachments one and two. Any further notes or concerns?
I was done with that.
Okay.
I mean, from my perspective.
Then if the Chair would like to take public input, or I can give you a recap of the items that I have derived have, or interpreted as having established consensus.
Yeah, we can go ahead with the topics.
Sure. One moment. First point or recommendation, stronger language to encourage anchor points versus the concrete slab. And use concrete slabs only when anchor points are not an option and won't take away from prime egg soils. Second, seek additional options to mitigate odor impacts to residential uses.
Say that again, please.
Seek additional options. The Planning Commission offers its strong support of an existing bullet point recommendation to seek additional options to mitigate odor impacts to residential uses. Lots of typing, lots of typing. Next one, on the site reclamation bond, direct staff to see if we can increase this and based on what would be reasonable for a remediation of a site. As a side note, not necessarily a recommendation for the ordinance, but the Planning Commission is interested in seeing the county-wide map of approved and pending cannabis applications, which I'm taking that to mean that we'll just integrate that into our presentation when we have use permit applications before you. I was capturing synopsis of public input as well, so lots of typing. Next, add homeschools to, or consider the addition of homeschools to the exclusion zone with public and private schools. And that is all I have as far as consensus-reached recommendations from the Planning Commission.
Do we not have, to reconsider farmland, farmland protection area?
Yes, we did. Yes, we did. One moment, let me go back up to that. Thank you. Another side note that I just saw, bring a presentation on the hydrology report criteria when we have it ready. Oh, here we go. Thank you. Would like to see the board revisit FPZ's, FPZ boundaries. There was no official vote taken on that, but Commissioner Rosenthal made that motion and Commissioner Field seconded that, so I will add a notation for that one. Oh, and I also missed, the, my understanding is the Commission is fine with recommendations of revocations to go straight to the Board unless the Board has other ideas. Is that accurate? Reclamation bond, oh yeah, I already did that one, and I think that completes it. Did I miss anything else? Commissioner Field wanted to prohibit the removal of oaks, but I did not see any consensus reached after I informed the Board that, or the Commission, that we do have a parallel process right now regarding an oak preservation policy that would then apply to all of our projects. And I think that's it for me.
And then we talked about generators also. But I can't say what the consensus was on that.
I captured some discussion on generators.
Was the topic?
I didn't see any consensus reached by the Planning Commission that was any different from what the task force had already recommended.
Yeah, because I believe that's a part of the conditions of approval for any project already, the use of generators.
Right, and the public input seemed to think that there was a recommendation to prohibit generators, and that is not the case. It's more to, the task force recommended that regulations for generators shall also apply to outdoor cultivation, and they should meet the fire code safety standards. We already have hazardous material storage, which would include fuel under the jurisdiction of EH, and that has been frequently included as necessary in our conditions of approval.
Are there any other things that we might have missed from the Commission? I believe that was everything. I would like to open public input into these recommendations. So, yes, stay your first and last name, and you'll have three minutes.
Thank you, Chair. Tom Lasik, I just wanted to put a finer point on the homeschools so that there's clarity and context on that. So currently, homeschools are recognized by the State of California as a legitimate form of private school. Whether or not it's easier to get an affidavit for that is immaterial. That's codified, and it's, you can look at Jonathan L. versus Superior Court of Los Angeles, 8808, to see the ruling on that. But to put it into context, in the Health and Safety Code, there, I believe, nine different areas where schools have a setback. If you want to put in a liquor store, a bar, a strip club, an adult club, a massage parlor, a tattoo parlor, rehabilitation center, there's, I think, nine of them. In each and every one of those cases, the setback is enjoyed by the homeschool. The only area in the state regulation where it isn't is with cannabis. So it's not that it's not a legitimate form of homeschool, it is. And in all those other cases, you don't see a flood of applications for homeschools to stop, you know, a tobacco shop. It just doesn't happen, okay? So I think for the idea of looking at health and safety for children, which is important, you can meet or exceed the state's requirement, and if it is determined through legal review that it does exceed a legal requirement, it should be, should be considered. And then the last one is just a comment about the hydrology and whatnot. It is best practice to have some sort of independent review. The suggestion that I brought forward, doesn't cost the applicant any more money, doesn't cost the county any more money. It's just a better way to do it that provides more transparency, and in event, it should also help simplify the process. I personally know, having gone through several of these, not necessarily with hydrology, but also hydrology and others, there's a lot of things that should never have made it through because of what we know about the land, what was reported, and things being magically disappearing, so on and so forth. Many of those things can be avoided if the process was different. Still needs to be done, there is, there's several different ways to do it, and the best practice is to try to have it as independent as possible. We do that with inspections today. Like I tried to mention when I ran out of time, I don't get to inspect my home. You guys come out, if you don't have enough inspectors, you get contractors for that. Looking at the land for archaeology, for biology, and all those other things, is inspecting for suitability. And so in that same spirit, it should be recognized. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Stay your first and last name for the record, and you'll have three minutes.
Bill Wilson, I just want to go back to the odor. I think what the county probably needs to do is sort of decide the priorities. You know, are we concerned about the income or the health and the welfare of the people of the county? I have three, four peer reviews that show the exposure to unpleasant odors is associated with annoyance, it can cause strong neurological, respiratory, and gastrointestinal symptoms. And I think what, a gap that we have is that the, I think we need to address the scientific community, the regulators, and industry to measure the air quality in and around the cannabis facilities, and especially in open, outdoor grow. I would be in favor of having all indoor filtered air scrubber facilities, and, and one of the reasons for that is because it's hard to measure because the, the influence of the formation of ultrafine particles in ground-level ozone, it moves so fast, you need to have real-time sampling instruments, which Lake County does not have, they have no way of sampling the air odors. I have suggested there's a couple of instruments that are available to do that that several other cities and states in the United States use. It gives a duration and dilution amount of odor to have something, but it has to be done, it can't be done day or two days later, it has to be done in real time. That's going to protect the people in the community, and I think that it has definitely been proven that the VOCs of volatile organic compounds are harmful to humans, they're harmful to the environment, they're harmful to vegetation. So I, again, we just need more testing and we need more attention to what the dangers are. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Good afternoon, Chair and Commissioners. Margot Cambara. To piggyback on odor mitigation, there is no good technical, technological solution for odor mitigation as far as cannabis is concerned. Increased setbacks have been recognized as an option. Municipalities that don't manage cannabis odor satisfactorily are finding themselves in court. It's best for all of us if we can come to an agreed solution. So we might not be able to find that solution today, we might not be able to find this solution when CDD comes forward with the revised ordinance, but as a community, it's a priority, we need to figure that out. On another subject, wildfire and generators. A lot has changed since the beginning of revising the ordinance. Since then, CAL FIRE has revised the wildfire hazard maps, maps, and just this week, the Board of Supervisors approved those maps. Well, what does that mean? Well, just last month, the Board of Supervisors proclaimed May 2025 as wildfire community preparedness month, and that proclamation urges community members to do their part to get ready for wildfire. Great, we should do that. Now, with the adoption of those increased wildfire hazard maps, the county needs to do its part too to keep the community safe, and that means reviewing and reconsidering ordinances that put the community at risk, such as the use of generators for permits when the applicant is waiting for a hookup to PG&E that can take years. We're talking about, projects are up in highly graded areas, well, areas where there's a high grade, where it's terrible roads, one way in, one way out. It's putting those neighbors at risk. So we, as a community, should do our best to keep everybody safe, especially with discretionary use permits. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. First and last name, and you have three minutes.
Thank you. Andrew Dobbs Kramer, just want to address a few things here. Firstly, just want to clarify some of the misconceptions that might be proliferating here today regarding terpenes. They're actually not unique to cannabis, they're in anything that gives off smell, your rosemary plant, your lavender plant, all of those have terpenes, and none of those have killed us. have killed us. I think the idea that terpenes are something unique to cannabis that are causing some terrible crisis of ozone being created at the ground level has been disproven in numerous scientific papers, and I think this is just honestly not a good faith argument. If we want to say we're bothered by the odors, that's one thing to say, but saying that we're creating something that doesn't exist and has been disproven is a little bit out there. I also want to talk about, you know, the beauty of the discretionary process is that as a planning commission and as the Board of Supervisors, you all are able to add conditions and mitigations, and staff is able to recommend mitigations that go above and beyond what would otherwise happen where there are not a use permit at these properties. So in the case of generators, we're talking about a highly regulated application that says this is the generator I want to use, this is how it meets all the codes, and that being approved is far safer than just a random use of a generator up on a hill because it doesn't have a use permit and I'm just a private citizen and I can use a generator. So I think it's very important to consider that these aren't just, we're not just saying go start a generator wherever you see fit. These are very clearly delineated things in the use permits. These are standards that people are held to above and beyond what otherwise they would be held to for those. Also, I just want to talk broadly about the structure and about kind of the goal here to align with state law, which is the charge that the Board of Supervisors put forth for this endeavor. And currently, there's a regulation, a proposed regulation from the Department of Cannabis Control to strike energy reporting from the annual renewals. Not because energy reporting is not important, but because California already has the PUC and numerous other bodies. Every county has an air quality board. Those already regulate those things. There's no need to redundantly regulate them over and over and over again at multiple layers. These are exactly the burdens, these are exactly the compliance costs that are hampering the industry. Having to report the same thing to four different agencies, having to do the same thing three different ways because everybody wants it slightly differently. The board has asked for alignment with state law. State law is very clear about what you're allowed to do with generators and what you're not. Deciding that we need to write a one-off and reinvent the wheel here for every policy is, is not actually meeting the goal of aligning with state law and streamlining this for both staff and operators, and improving legibility so that we really can weed out the bad actors. When everything is confusing, it's very hard to know who's working in good faith and who is not. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment, and I think he made some great points regarding legal activity and illegal activity, permitted and unpermitted projects, and just typical, you know, use of anyone that wants to use a generator. So that's something that we have to keep in mind, that these applications are going through, you know, a lot of hoops to be able to get to where they are. So I think in, yeah, so it was a good point. Let me check the Zoom room to see if there's any hands. All right, I'm going to take some hands in the Zoom room.
There's a guest.
Thank you. My name's Angela Amrell. Once again, I'd like to request a recommendation that, on that permit application, that for properties that are in an HOA and a POA, it be required that they submit a letter of approval from the HOA or the POA upon, with their application. I know the county is not, is not in the business of upholding HOA or POA law, but the county should not be undercutting an agreement between a property owner and an association at the same time. So it would be very helpful, this is a reason that I got involved in this over three years ago, was because our POA had an issue where applications were being submitted without approval from the POA, and it caused a big riff in our POA. So I would like to see that added as well. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. We had another hand in the Zoom room.
Maria Khan.
Maria Khan, stay your first and last name, and you'll have three minutes.
Oh, I'm sorry. I guess I never lowered my hand. I don't have a comment, but thank you all for being there and going through all this. It's tedious, and I appreciate what you do. Thank you.
Thank you. Is that it for the Zoom room?
Yes.
All right, so bringing it back to the chambers, first and last name, and you'll have three minutes.
I need two minutes or less. Tom Lasik, I want to reinforce what the previous speakers talked about on the terpenes. It's absolutely correct that cannabis has terpenes, as does other fruits and vegetables, that smell nice. They all have terpenes. It's a common natural odor. But that's not the point. The point is that there's another odor chemical called philes, and philes is the sulfur-based compounds. That's what gives you the smell of, well, as humans, we're evolved to avoid the smell of philes. It's a smell of death. It's a smell of rotting carcasses, bad water, rotten egg smell. All those things that we've evolved to react to negatively. Cannabis has richened philes as well. That almost never gets discussed because it's not a good spin for the industry. But that's the smell that permeates long distances as well. It's not the terpenes. Terpenes do break down very quickly, especially with ozone types of features. But it's the philes that causes, causes the objectionable reaction, not the terpenes. So, thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Hey, Michael Green. I'm going to try to craft a compromise here. So going back to the, the homeschools, I know you already got consensus before lunch at least, that you wanted to kick a recommendation to the board, but your consensus isn't here after lunch. So I just want to point out procedurally that any person who won on that motion does have the ability to enter a motion to reconsider or rescind the prior recommendation, and I'm going to ask that you do that for a couple of reasons. One, we don't know what we don't know. So in isolated incidents, maybe it wouldn't be a big deal, but if we have hundreds of homeschools, if not thousands of homeschools licensed in this county, where are they? And what would be the impact on the industry as a whole? How many projects could move forward? And without having a map of that, and by the way, good luck getting that map, because homeschool locations are confidential, and you can't get a map from LCOE. So you can ask them how many homeschools are in Lake County, but he won't be able to tell you where they are and comply with state law. So it seems like a overbroad fix to what may in many cases be an isolated problem. It is not the same as a K-12 school that has dozens, if not hundreds, of students. It is not the same as a youth center or a church gathering hall. And the reason those definitions are stacked up in state law in terms of cannabis licensing is because those greater numbers of children are really, are where the focus of the protection of the public safety and welfare is, not these isolated incidents which are more residential in nature. So the compromise I'm going to propose is, I actually agree with Margot and others who have noted that sometimes, especially in the case of setbacks from off-site property, residential properties, that maybe that's 600 feet, that 800 feet, that 1,000 feet, whatever it is, and I'd have to defer to staff at this point, just may not be adequate. And on the one hand, I want to fight for the right of agricultural odors to be treated that way, and for people to just get over it. In the real life, that's not real life, you know? So it should be treated the same as a sheep farm or a hog farm that has nuisance odors. They're agricultural odors, and we should not try to overregulate those to the point that we hamper agriculture. But we also have to understand over the history of our cannabis industry up to this point, and where we may be moving in the forward, odors and odor control distance is where it's the cheapest, most effective way. So if I could try to tack you down off the ledge of the, the homeschools and say what you really want to do is protect the off-site residences, and consider whether greater setbacks would actually help that, as opposed to other types of things that would have unpredictable consequences, I think you'll see broad consensus in the room that we should at least ask staff to take a look at those setbacks, especially in concerns for off-site residences, and see if there's something we can do there.
Thank you for your comment. Are there any further comments in the Zoom room, or no more in the chambers? So we will close public input and bring it back.
Oh, he put his hand.
Okay, so we'll still closing public input, bringing it back to the commission for further discussion.
One thing I'd like to say is thanks very much to everyone who's here in person and on Zoom, offering comment on this subject matter. I also want to thank those, those who have sent in green sheets. One item on a green sheet that we didn't discuss is scenic corridors. So I just wanted to bring that up, as I, I think that's an important issue, not only for this topic, but just all. And I'm going to relate back to now out of business, and now I believe it's a cannabis operation actually, at what was formerly the Parker Plastics on Highway 29 in Lower Lake. And I remember when they did an expansion and put in a building, that they had a large building that was going to, you know, just have a blank wall against Highway 29. That was one of the things that we looked at, is how can we mitigate that and make that softer so that it didn't impact the scenic corridor? So I know that there has been a past project, or a more recent past project, that also kind of touched on that scenic corridor issue, and so I guess I just wanted to bring this subject matter up in beautiful Lake County here, that that is an issue also that we want to just be sensitive to. And perhaps there's already verbiage in the ordinance that protects scenic corridors, but nonetheless, reading through it in the public comment that we received, I just wanted to make that comment. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. All right, well, seeing as we have these recommendations are from the Planning Commission, do we have to make a motion to?
It's a, if you would prefer a motion to, to approve those recommendations as, as I read them, that's fine. Otherwise, I have consensus, I have direction.
Or do we have to go one by one, like as to approve them? Okay. Well, regarding the, the homeschooling, the consideration to add homeschools to private or public, or to have the same protections as private or public, since that did come up in the public input, do we have to reconsider that? No? Okay.
No.
All right.
No, but I do, I do appreciate the compromise that was, that was offered with the setbacks and, and that has been recorded or entered into evidence, I guess, and.
Yeah, the, the compromise offered regarding just relooking at setbacks to off-site residences may help, because I was wondering if homeschools are confidential in nature and we can't find out during our completeness review initially, and it conceivably would not, the, the neighboring homeschool may not become aware until the, the permit process is going through a notice public hearing, and they receive a public hearing notice. That's very late in the process. So if there is not an easy, or, or not just easy, but pathway for staff to determine homeschools, that could be problematic.
Yeah, that definitely wouldn't be in the, in line with streamlining the process. So, but anyway, so that is, is an option, I think, for, for consideration as that discussion moves forward.
I just think we just ought to explore all the, all the possibilities, setbacks included. You know, let's look, let's look at it in its entirety, and, and then we can make an informed decision of what might be the best way to accommodate as many of those involved as possible.
That's fine. When these recommendations do go before the board, after that, during that internal drafting of the ordinance process, I'll be working with staff as well as county council to take a look at what we are able to do, and if we need to consider other options at that time, I'd be happy to bring that back to the commission.
Yeah, I guess I'd just like to note that the most discussed topic in these recommendations was the odor control. So just, I'm looking forward to see how, how that goes, and like I said, hopefully, we can mitigate and find ways to mitigate that, that issue.
Certainly.
So I don't see that we have to make any motions for this item?
Staff, we have received direction.
Okay. So that concludes our non-timed item 7A. We move on to our item number eight for department update.
I have no department update today.
All right, no department update, which leads us to, this meeting is adjourned at 2:05. Thank you.